Heck?
Here.
Hetzer?
Here.
Kaufman? Kestner?
Here.
Palmer? Chris Miller?
Here.
All right, go right into the superintendent's report, Dr. Nessman.
Okay, so this evening we have, if you remember about a year ago, we created or started, I guess it's more than a year ago. We tried to start looking at what a profile of a Trojan would look like, as far as a profile of a graduate, and we're ready to roll it out. So, if you remember, just to give you some background, this all started, I guess, a year, well, I guess it's more than two and a half years ago, Chris and I were sitting on that side of the board table, working on our comprehensive plan, and I think at some point, we talked about what a Trojan means. As we're going through our comprehensive planning, what does it mean to be a Trojan? And we started having these brainstorming sessions of, you know, wouldn't it be cool to have a profile of what a Trojan is as a teacher, as an administrator, as a graduate? And slowly, that morphed into a big picture of ultimately, what defines what a Trojan is. And then, at that time, both Tim and Dennis were coming on board, and we asked Chris to create a high school leadership team that would help this process in designing what we were calling some kind of a profile of a Trojan, whether it be a graduate, whether it be an employee, but we wanted to be able to frame all of our conversation around, this is what a Trojan is, and this is what we expect from a Trojan, whether it be parents, families, and some of those teachers, administrators, parents, custodians, everything would be framed. So, over the course of about a year, the high school team met last school year, and it soon became evident that we want to do something bigger than a profile of graduate, but we don't need 13 different profiles, because a Trojan embodies certain characteristics. And over time, we transitioned to what we call the Portrait of a Trojan, and that's what we're rolling out today. So, if you look over on the right here, Chris Hemrick built is our logo, wrapped around the Portrait of a Trojan, and our tagline, Expect, Believe, Achieve. And then, we identified five habits that we feel every Trojan should embody. So, how we got to that point, we put out surveys to parents, community members, staff members, students, we convened focus groups, and in those surveys, we asked, what are the most important characteristics that we want from our kids, from our community, from our staff? When you say Trojan, what do you mean, what does that mean? What do you think it means? What should a Trojan embody? We conducted focus groups, asked some of our team members to go out to businesses and ask them, what exactly, what kind of habits or what kind of characteristics do you want your employees to have when they come in? And then, we created a drive team to analyze thousands of pieces of data points and consolidated it down to what we call key habits. And we went back and forth, are they characteristics? Are they traits? Are they habits? And what we came upon is they're habits, just like, you know, without thinking about it, you bite your fingernails. We want characteristics or traits of people, of our Trojan, that people just do naturally, without even thinking about it, it is what embodies them. As a group, we defined those definitions, and then, we created I-statements, action statements for them, and that's what we're going to roll out and kind of present to you tonight. But the five habits that we identified, that we felt that every successful Trojan needs to have, is they need to be an active collaborator, they need to be able to work together with people, interact, whether it's in school, whether it's in the community, whether it's at work, they need to be a compassionate citizen, they need to be able to go out there and promote themselves, and be a productive member of society, interacting and working through expectations, and building the community out of large. They need to be effective communicator, they need to be an innovative problem solver, and they need to be a resilient individual, someone that can, has the grit and the perseverance to pick themselves up and keep going and moving forward. So, to roll it out, we engaged one of our high school students, Hannah, and I'm going to butcher the name, I know I am.
Wojtkowski.
Wojtkowski. And she had made a BCTC video for them, a promotional video, who was shared with us, and we're like, wow, that's what we want to do, and that's the talent that they have. So, we asked her to create kind of a promotional video for when we launch our Portrait of a Trojan in the fall, and kind of start really branding it and putting it out there, and we're excited to show you what she did. We are proud to introduce the Portrait of a Trojan. The portrait is a combined effort of our community coming together to identify the habits that we believe every Trojan should have to be successful. These habits will serve as the guiding principles in all we do at Topahocken Area.
I gather strength from my community throughout all time. I learned that there's none setbacks, opportunities to go to home.
I embrace my breakthrough and achieving my goal and everything highly effective. I'm focused on the possibilities of why I would not curve things.
I am a resilient individual.
I analyze problems from multiple angles.
I'm a complete success is in failures. I seem to understand and ask critical questions.
I challenge myself to build the opposite.
I am an innovative problem solver.
I actively listen and acknowledge different viewpoints to engage instructed.
I create and actively tell our voices to hear.
I understand my audience and regard my messages accordingly.
I express myself with honesty and integrity.
I am an effective communicator.
I actively listen to and try to understand perspectives on others, even when they depart from my home.
I hold myself accountable for my actions.
I treat those around me the way I would like to be treated.
I assist and support those who need, but accept anything in return.
I am a compassionate citizen.
I recognize, appreciate, and value different strengths because they contribute to a well-organized solution.
I provide constructive feedback and actively seek it from others to improve the team's work.
I compromise and adapt my approach to achieve a common goal.
Interact with teammates in a way that makes everyone feel safe to share their ideas.
I am an active collaborator.
I am.
I am.
I am.
A Trojan.
And so, based on our mission here, our Expect, Believe, Achieve, we believe that in order to fulfill our mission, those five habits are what every Trojan, whether you are a staff member, a parent, a community member, a student here, to be successful, you need those five habits when you call yourself a Trojan. I'm going to turn it over to Dennis, he's going to talk a little bit about, you can keep that slide for a second. It's important to recognize that other schools have embarked on the profile of a graduate, it's not necessarily a new concept, the challenge is, is it just a token and a symbol, or is it something that's actually intentional and actionable? Our goal from the start has been mission focused, so with Expect, Believe, Achieve, everything has been derived from that. But I want to really call out a couple of key concepts, and not just the Expect, Believe, Achieve, but in the believe part, that idea that we believe in the inborn ability of all children to obtain knowledge and skills, right? And a couple of times throughout this past year, we've talked about knowledge and skills, we've talked about school not just being, you know, learning about facts and figures, it's how they're learning that's equally as important. It's the learning experiences that we put kids, you know, engaged in through the vehicle of the actual content standards, it's kind of that blend of both that marry up and make for an awesome environment for kids to thrive. So, when we go into this, and you can switch slides, Dr. Nessman, when we look at this, we're not just talking about the portrait and trying to design learning experiences and work our academic curriculum around all five of these habits, we also want to look at how are we building the dispositions and the habits of the person to also fit that? Because we know if we believe that all kids can be successful in whatever career choice they have, we've had conversations, even in board meetings, that there are some intangible, if we call them soft skills, habits, characteristics of a person that helps make them successful. So, our goal is to take the portrait, and everything that we do from a systems standpoint as a district will be viewed through that lens. So, if we're writing curriculum for mathematics, we're going to be looking at the standards of mathematics, we're going to make sure that we're building and aligning there, but as we're designing learning experiences, we're going to intentionally call out opportunities where we're trying to build an innovative problem solver in mathematics, where it's okay to attack a messy problem, and then develop grit and persevere and help them build strategies so that they don't hit a wall and just quit, right? We want them to be able to blow through that wall when they get challenged. But if we don't call that out intentionally, we're missing an opportunity to grow. So, the whole purpose of this portrait is, it is literally our guiding beacon, our north star, decisions we make, situations we put students in, so that we can build their capacity to go on regardless of workforce, college, military, we can trust that they're successful. And it's important that thousands of data points and engaging with community, this wasn't we decided on these five habits, this is what the community and the drive team identified as these habits. All we did was lead that drive team through, helping define them. So, in the next couple of slides, I'm not going to read these, but we are going to create posters, and we're going to create a lot of messaging to help teach students intentionally about what these habits mean. So, in front of you, you have, and we'll post it to our website, once we kind of work through all this process, we created these definitions as a community. So, we didn't go on, you know, look in the dictionary, we didn't get those, this is what an active collaborator means to us, but in the video, you heard the students talk about I-statements, they kept saying I, I, I. The whole purpose behind the I-statement is to create ownership in the students. So, when you say I'm an active collaborator, well, what does that mean? You know, but when a student can sit there and, you know, talk about I compromise and adapt my approach to achieve a common goal, we want students to take ownership in their growth and capacity to grow as an active collaborator, just as much as the teachers. So, when we, again, design lessons, we want to design lessons that call these statements out. The PBIS are the Positive Behavior Interventional Support System, where we get TALP tickets, we want to be able to identify kids who are showing these I-statements to recognize and celebrate them as well. So, this is a great thing that we can go through. So, I have all the definitions on here, I have all the I-statements, and Dr. Nessman can certainly cycle through, we won't read them, we have them for you. We wanted to show you that we're trying to be intentional about developing every aspect of our learners, so that when they go out to the community, they are the complete portrait of a Trojan, and they have all the skills and dispositions necessary to just thrive and make us proud of the way that we pay tradition to do it. So, as we go through these, again, you can go to the last one, so that we don't have to read these. I want you to think through, you know, this Portrait of a Trojan, like I said, everything we do is that, these are our guiding principles that are guiding us towards that collective mission. And it's an exciting time, because we have representation across all buildings, parents, local business owners, teachers, everyone had a say, and I think we landed in a spot that's going to be very powerful to propel us and continue us moving forward. So, one of the things that we'll ask tonight is, there was, I had emailed out a resolution to you that we'll ask for the official adoption of this, to sanction it, kind of as the guiding principles, and you do have in front of you all of this broken down. The committee was very intentional to make sure that all the definitions, all the I-statements accurately reflected our community. Hours and hours were poured into it, Mrs. Kestner was somebody who was part of that process, Mrs. Bolz in the back was part of that process as well, in going through, and we literally, you know, identified a definition, and then, as groups, there was groups from each building walked around and looked at those definitions and said, you know what, I don't like this word, or this word, you know, doesn't represent our community, or this word would better represent our community. So, each one of them, each word was chosen intentionally to make sure that this product is an accurate reflection of who Topahocken is and what we believe a Trojan is. And as Dr. Portman mentioned, this is what we will roll out, and this is something that we will expect teachers to be working towards, you know, the content in each subject is important, but these five skills are what we believe will make every kid and every person successful. You know, the content is just the icing on the cake, but this is, these habits are what we strive for, to instill in all of our kids, and make sure they have to be able to be successful. Any questions? Thoughts? Go ahead.
It's kind of, it's one tangent more than it's called connected, but, and one of the things in here is effective communicator, and for me, when I went to school, and I still think it's true, the FFA speeches and competitions were probably the most, probably the best thing, one of the best things I did to help you be able to communicate more effectively. It got you out of your comfort zone, and they had a bunch of different categories, and I would really like to see that concept brought into the rest of the school, and maybe have some kind of speech contest, and, because they did, they had, you could do it prepared, you could do it contemporaneous, which is they give you a topic there, and you got to come up, you got a half hour to come up with the speech and speak on it. They had a creed, which was just a saying of just how well they did it, but, I mean, it teaches you to be able to communicate and express your thoughts, and try to take some of that fear out of it, because, I mean, like you say, communication for anybody is the key to being successful. And for me, that was one of the biggest things that helped me, was that, was speech, and I still think today that it's the best thing going. And, I mean, I love judging a lot of stock and everything else, and that kind of stuff, but the speech contest, as hard as it is, it's very effective, and I would really like to see that brought into the school system, whether it be grade-wise or something, but, you know, something along that lines. Not only does it teach you communication, it teaches you everything else, too.
When I was in high school, they used to have debate, debate teams travel to other schools, I don't even know if they do that anymore.
I know classes, sort of classes we debated, I don't remember how they baited.
Is that covered at all in English? That would be like an English kind of class.
There is an elective, there is a speech elective, do we still run it?
Oh, it's speaking?
Yeah.
If we get the numbers, we'll, but we didn't have it this year.
But I can tell you that in English class, Jenny Patacola, they debated this year.
I didn't actually guess his question.
Yeah, I heard lots of testimony from FFA students, and almost, I would say 97% of them said the exact same thing, because I was forced to, if I wanted to be in this, to make some kind of speech, which they said they were terrified about, but here they are standing in front of us now, at the end of the year, able to speak to a whole table of peers and older people, and they did a good job, but they all said how much it helped them.
I think that's a great example of how we can leverage the portrait, in all honesty, because if we didn't call out effective communication as something we want to build in our kids, we'd get lost in, we're just teaching them, you know, the traditional styles of writing and ELLI. So, this is an opportunity where, how can we intentionally build those experiences to develop that effective communicator? Not just in writing, because I know that's also in the conversation, right? But all types of communication.
Uncomfortable, new situations, or how to learn, that's just how. Sometimes you fail, and sometimes that's the best learning experience in the whole world. I've been there a million times, still going there every day, just to learn, right, man?
So, we will definitely look at how we can do that. The only other item I have for tonight is, if you have driven by the high school, there is a lot of furniture sitting in the one side parking lot, one of the things we would like to propose is that as we, we've had a couple of different options of how we could get rid of furniture that we will no longer need because of the renovation, we've looked at scrapping it, we've looked at having the contractor scrap it, a lot of it requires us dismantling that furniture, and then, at the end of the day, in kind of our discussions, the community at some point purchased that furniture, like tax dollars, and so, why not offer an opportunity for the community to have that furniture if they want it? So, one of the proposals we're going to, we'd like to propose is that we allow kind of a community yard sale, on a first come, first served, anybody that would like that furniture, we would put out a message that says it's available, come and take what you want, no cost, no charge, that it would be free to the community. But before we did something like that, we wanted to kind of get your blessing that you're on board with that and like the idea, I think people have already started.
Why Bill was late and stopped everybody?
Any of the furniture that we could reutilize or repurpose that has been newer over the last couple of years, still is in the building, and it will be repurposed throughout the district as well, but some of the older stuff is outside.
I heard that local public school startup had stopped and loaded up, they're running a storage place till they're ready.
She was about to drive to North Carolina and take 40 hours to get us, which left her feet up, so she was, she was almost tears yesterday when she was getting set up.
I know a few of us around this table, if it's free as for me, they'll go pretty quick.
Yeah, it's easier than us having to scrap, pull it off, and scrap it. So, if you're okay with it, we'll put a message out tomorrow and let people know if they can come and get it. The only other item I want to just recognize are, we had three retirees this year, Eric Wendling retired after 30 years teaching, and then, we also had Deb Neller teaching that retired after 35 years, she retired in January, and then Cindy Boyer, in the middle of the year, a custodian, also retired this year. So, 80-plus years of service to the district, and they're certainly part of a generation that made a huge impact on our district. So, you know, we celebrate with them on their retirement, but it's also, they would be sorely missed, so congratulations to them.
And Mr. Wendling about to wrap, as well.
So? Did you?
No, I'm asking.
Oh, is it down?
I think we showed.
Has he said anything like that, Chris?
He doesn't give that impression.
He has other ideas.
He's got some life.
Yes, he does.
All right. Are there any citizens or students wishing to address the board to see me, to change the agenda? Seeing none, we're going to move on, buildings and grounds, Mr. Heck? And technology.
Technology, yeah. Couple of these are highlighted, so. Bridge one, open one, approve the stadium turf, approve the stadium turf and track replacement proposal, AEM Architects as president.
For a second for that?
Chris, no, a second.
Are there any comments on this? The only thing that I'll comment is, last time when we talked about this, there was some discussion about putting the second, the idea of a second turf field in the back of a building as an alternate. So, I talked to AEM, and their concern about doing it as an alternate is the possibility of not getting people to bid on the full project, because they're afraid that if, his take was, was that they don't want to put in all the work, the engineering, the civil engineering, the design, to then only have it as an alternate, a taker, yes. His take on it was, let's pull the project as separate, the turf and track need to be replaced at this time, and then, if it is the desire of the board to move forward, then do it as another project, and then, that would be another engagement. So, one of the things to think about if we wanted to decide tonight or at a later date is, how do we want to proceed with the potential for a second?
Is the 35,000 the estimated cost for them to do the stadium field?
Yes.
Without the other?
Without the other. And that was kind of what he said to Matt and I, was that was kind of like a worst-case scenario, they're just giving a high end, and it's basically on and as the, doing the documents, bidding, and then supervising as.
How is that going to be a pretty simple control? Yes, if they would add, no need.
I don't know how involved it would be.
So, they did go for?
Yeah.
He indicated that data, that we made it very simple, because they have all the specs of what was done originally.
So, why is that?
It's enough to exceed, correct?
Right.
Yeah.
So, it doesn't necessarily mean?
It doesn't, it could be $3,500 if it's pretty big. I always get scared.
Yeah.
I'd rather know what something costs than, you know. Should be pretty straightforward.
I mean, typically, their customary is about 6%, so that would come in at about 66. And that's what he said, it's a fairly easy, but he wanted to kind of give worst-case scenario, isn't that what he said, Matt?
Yeah.
Because he thought, basically, it would all depend on if the project goes smooth, and he doesn't need to be on-site as much, and can just basically help guide things through. He also had said, you know, it also depends on how much Matt and I want to be involved in that process, Tom as well, with the oversight, that it could be very little that he needs to be here.
So, I have a question, are they going to come at us with, like, hey, do you want to improve it like this, and do you want to do this extra thing, and this is what's in the loop right now, and, or have they been given instructions, oh, we want to replace it? We're not going to, you know what I mean? Like, there's always new stuff, I mean, that's going on in any field.
What we had talked to them is, the current product that we have has served us well, has served us 14 years, will be 15 years by the time, so we're looking for similar product and similar design in how it works.
The only thing would be like colors.
Right. Which are not changing.
This will be to be completed next summer?
Yes.
So, we don't have to wait on it to be done?
He said the sooner we can get this, the sooner the project can get designed and move forward.
Yeah, that I mentioned, June 2025?
Yeah.
He also was hoping to get more competitive bidding, if people want to get this quick in spring, again.
So, we have motion, we have second, are we good to proceed? Okay, roll call?
Hetzer?
Yes.
Butler.
Yes.
Riz Miller?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Bats?
Yes.
Kester?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
All right. Three one zero two. I guess they as listed, I'll see this in the next page.
I'd just like to add, just to, I'd like to add to all these change orders, Mr. Fox couldn't be here tonight. He had some concerns and I posed these concerns with Mr. Sherk last week. Had opportunity to walk through the project again, which they made amazing project, progress on the project in three weeks since I did the last walkthrough, it's like nine day difference, it's really coming off. But Mr. Fox had asked him to bring up to the board some of these things that were seen as change orders, he felt should have definitely been in the bid and it almost feels, and I would concur with this thought process, that some of them may have been intentional from the architect to lower the bid, knowing that it had, that would have to be done anyway. His suggestion was, might be worth trying to call for a meeting with them. There is stuff that's understandable, but there's a lot of stuff that isn't. So I just wanted to share those thoughts, I don't know if anybody else has the same feelings or how that would look.
I'm sure that's based off of his professional experience in his line of work, correct?
I would concur as well and I think, and I don't want to speak that you were there, I don't want to speak out of turn, but I think Andrew from Fidavia almost felt along the same lines. I don't want to speak for Andrew, but is that the impression you would have got?
For some, yeah.
I just wanted to share that Rusty couldn't be here this evening, he had asked me to share that.
So we do, every time there's a change order, Matt and I do meet with Fidavia, we go through them. Fidavia does go back and has raised concerns from the owner's perspective on a lot of it. They are tracking the change orders to make sure that by the end of the project where we are, that a lot of that is there. Have spoken to Mr. Boland about it as well, some of the concerns as to what we have. My understanding is a lot of the solutions would come at the end of the project and not necessarily at the end, but we are, that is something we're tracking. All of it is tracked, all of it is tracked as a percentage of the project where it needs to be. But I think, I think we're all on the same page as to what. What is that?
I live right now and that change order is plus thirty-five thousand. The general contractor is forty-four thousand dollar increase, the electrical contractor is a million thousand dollar increase.
Were you concerned we're just getting started mentioning changes?
This is, this is about normal.
I would, I would argue the fact that, yeah, this is normal, we haven't even begun to tear open old walls yet. You know, the library is it, the library and gym and locker rooms are basically all that has been touched so far. When we get into the cafeteria and all the meat and bones of the building, I'm very nervous. Personally, this is just my opinion, that's where I think we're at the scene.
Well, the normal is going down now. I don't, I just think things aren't normal.
Yeah, again, for us where we are nine months into it, to have only thirty-five thousand in change orders, I think is what you're saying, that's normal, but to have some of these change orders in nine months should have been right. And a lot of what we're running into now is, the issue is the redesign. Stuff was in the, was in the design, the first design was removed from the second design. And that's where we wind up going back and forth as to how was it taken out, why was it taken out? A lot of those concerns have been raised with the architect as well. But yes, I don't, I don't disagree with what you're saying.
We paid plenty of money for the design and it should have not.
And there is plenty of money that we still owe the architect, so that is part of it.
I shared that with Mr. Fox as well, and we do have a little bit of leverage there.
Anything else on change orders? All right, continue on, Mr. Heck, please.
Three point zero three. Approve the code from C D I L L C, purchase Dell Latitude, three four fifty staff laptops and the amount of sixteen thousand one hundred thirty-five million cents for our technology play.
Palmer's name. Any comments on that? Roll call?
Butler.
Yes.
Riz Miller?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Bats?
Yes.
Kester?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes. All right, moving on to finance, Mr. Heck.
So we have the first one, A, approve the adoption of the final budget for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year with projected expenditures of three one zero eight seven five seventy-four and projected revenues of twenty million, letter twenty-four ninety. Including real estate, tax bills rate of twenty-five point seven five, act five eleven per capita tax of five dollars. School code section six seventy-nine per capita tax of five dollars, half a percent per capita tax and half a percent real estate transfer. Above numbers are based on the voluntary budget subject to change prior to final approval.
That is a tax decrease?
A tax decrease of twenty oh five. And we're working to get the budget to be balanced by the time you get to, then actually in two weeks. That would be eight years in a row for increase as well with number increases.
How high are our rates?
Twenty-seven point four five is the highest.
Two point seven.
Twenty-seven, oh, sorry, twenty-seven point seven is the highest. We're at twenty-seven point seven since. Twenty-seven point seven, we're at two thousand. Two thousand thirteen. Eighty-seven point seven. Since twenty thirteen, we have not raised taxes. Got them saved for five years when we let it down in the year.
I'm good with wrapping talk, Mr. Heck. You all know what I'm thinking.
Okay, moving on to B, approve the transfer of seventy-nine, twenty-three, eighty-four, fifty-six from the general fund to the cafeteria fund, easers grant funds were received to subsidize the food service department for lost subsidy revenue during the school shutdown in the spring of twenty twenty to the early nineteen. And then C, approve the adoption of the twenty-four, twenty-five homestead and homestead exclusive resolution. And then D, approve the tax resolution to levy taxes for the corporate employees school year. Next page, we have E, approve registration to make the, make any necessary journal entries and budget transfers to the financial statements of the school district after June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. And F, approve the commitment of funds for the following categories in accordance with G S, sorry, G A S B fifty-four and board policy six twenty. As listed there. And then moving on to G, this is going to be what we're going on. Approve the contract between easers northeast LLC, Tohacan area school district on July first, twenty twenty-four through July thirtieth, twenty twenty-five pending solicitor approval.
Any comments on that? Can we get a second?
I need a second.
I have a question. Any comments on that? Why only a one-year contract? I mean, fuck was not to lock ourselves into, we have to see what it was for the first year. Correct?
No, our subs from the other service automatically?
Yes, so Ben, our representative from E S S is here. As soon as this is approved, we'll begin that process of reaching out to our current substitutes to then come on board with E S S. And there's some incentives for them to do that, correct?
Yeah, when the substitutes come back for the meeting, we'll bring them all on board and we'll give them a twenty-five dollar gift card for their time.
Is there any chance of losing some?
There is a chance, but we generally see about ninety-nine percent. Because what we see is the subs are loyal to your district, it's generally not the service. It's more so, they want to work in Tohacan, so it's, the loyalty lies here more so than the company generally.
Roll call?
Chris Miller?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Bats?
Yes.
Kester?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Butler?
Yes.
All right, moving on to five, personnel, Mr. Palmer.
Yes, first one's the vote on, I move we approve the following resignations. Chris Doig is earth science teacher at the high school, effective the last day of the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. And Emily Bevins is a part-time instructional pair educator at Penn Birmingham Elementary, effective five thirty, twenty-four.
Heck, second.
Any comments? All those in favor who consent to say an aye? All right. Those who no? I just have a motion carries.
High fees for next meeting and it's professional staff salary adjustments based on collective bargaining agreement as listed there. And C, we're voting on tonight, I move that we approve a supplemental contract for the following coach position for the twenty-four, twenty-five sports season. Well, Logan Hearn, assistant high school girls soccer coach, thirty-two hundred and forty-three dollars.
Heck, second.
Any comments?
So do we have an opening here?
We do. This would be from Paul and Kyle Zellman designing, Paul retiring and Kyle not coming back. Roll call?
Bats?
Yes.
Kester?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Butler?
Yes.
Riz Miller?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Moving on to policy, Mr. Heck.
Letter A, give first reading with intent to give second reading with final approval on July sixteenth, twenty twenty-four to the following policies as listed.
Questions or comments there? Moving on to number nine, items for board action, this is Riz Miller.
So everybody voting on this, nine point zero one, approve the adoption of the resolution to support the portrait of Jordan as presented.
Heck, second.
Any comments? What's that?
Why are we approving this for our own?
We were just, we had time this summer to get things organized.
If I hadn't gotten it organized, we'd be back on that. Just try and keep the voting, or the work session, unless it's really important, we're talking all that there, Bill. Yeah, motion is second on the floor. Mine will go ahead, yeah.
Roll call?
Kester?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Butler?
Yes.
Riz Miller?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Bats?
Yes.
So just a comment on up above, sorry, the use of the generative artificial intelligence, I was reading about that. It's rather confusing and interesting all. I, I kind of pity our teachers. Because I think this is just going to make teaching that much more difficult to agree.
So some of it talks about the ethical uses of A I, academic integrity. It, a lot of it gives us, right now when a kid plagiarizes, we don't necessarily have any policies that apply to A I other than use plagiarism.
This is now confused, is A I academic integrity or artificial intelligence?
Less now. It's artificial intelligence.
Okay.
But what the policy outlines is, it's under a section, there's a section of academic integrity. The usage of A I can be a key educational tool, but there's limits to that. I think the policy even talks about teachers using it for activities and lesson plans, but not like stopping short of just going to A I and saying, give me everything I need to know and, you know, just replicating. That it's used as a tool and not as a replacement.
So it seemed unless I wasn't understanding, it was just getting late, there's a little difference between just A I and define maybe generative artificial intelligence. It seemed like there was almost two categories in that reading that it sent us, maybe I'm wrong.
So the way I viewed, at least on the policy, is A I being, the difference between the two is that generative, A I can generate the videos, the voices, the images.
Almost like assist to the project.
Like right now, like you get it right by paragraph essay comparing movie dicks or something else.
Right, I know.
So it's, that's.
So that's what we're saying, no, but you're saying the generative is like when I would have written a pie chart to show my project that I wrote. You're saying we're allowing that portion of A I.
The generative were not, the other part kind of pops up in different applications automatically. It's just some of that's there.
Yeah.
We want our students to produce their own authentic work, so this is an opportunity to put some policy in place to prevent them from short covering their authentic work and taking it to a best pay. It is a tool like anything else, but it's going to be navigating how to appropriately use it and when to appropriately use it and not as a shortcut to bypass hard work.
And how, how can a teacher figure that out? If you hand in a term paper, I mean, could they test it by going to line of sales and say, write me your paper out and see if it matches that? Or is it going to be different?
We have products that, a lot of times our teachers are asking them to submit electronically and they can put it through a product like Turnitin that can generate and figure out whether it's A I enabled, if it's plagiarized from some other source.
Okay, so there's products that determine that.
And it does, the difference kind of goes back to what you said, like pie charts, like there's the difference between putting data in and getting some kind of analytical product versus what Dennis said is create an image of X, Y, and Z or, you know, take a snippet of Kyle's voice and now create a whole song of him singing using his voice. There's a lot of unique things, but a lot of what we're seeing at the school level is, you know, like I said, writing an essay, a five paragraph essay. Here are the topics, here's what I need to have in it. And outspits you an essay within seconds.
It's scary, the A I thing is scary, my phone gave, it did an update and now it asks me if I want to text an A I response. So like if I say, like, let's say one of my employees says, can you come pick me up? And I say no, it will, it will know the text before asking to be picked up and it says, unfortunately I cannot pick you up and it pulls from the calendar too, as I'm in a meeting until twelve o'clock. And I'm like, okay, I Google how to turn that
Right, turn it off.
Stuff off, I don't like that. But yeah, it's like, it makes me sound intelligent and I'm not savvy at all.
And Matt's all about that, sitting over there being like, that's cool, that is cool. For most of us, it's scary now. For most of us, it's scary now.
Yeah.
Moving on to administrative reports, Mr. Patrick.
We had a phenomenal conclusion to the square Keystone went very well. Uh, we were able to get a lot of kids passing their courses. Remember, we did do that modified schedule where kids who were failing any of the courses have to come in and get that additional work. Kids who were not, uh, kids who were passing everything and had parent permission were able to go home. We were able to quietly go through Keystone this year. Um, really did notice the kids taking their time on the assessment, using their whole time because they knew they were going to be in that testing room for the entirety. Whereas many years past, we were running a different schedule where kids would see the kids do transition in the hallway and want to get out and go do their regular schedule. So Keystone went very well. Uh, Mrs. Parsons and I had the opportunity to go to BCTC recognition at Sam Pander. Um, huge, huge giant event filling the arena. Awesome to see our kids go through and, uh, complete BCTC. Actually Hannah, uh, the young lady who helped, um, put that video together, she actually was outstanding senior, um, representing Topo Hocken very proudly. And last but not least, uh, hold on one second. Um, graduation ceremony, absolute perfect, perfect weather condition, but I know a lot of you were there. Um, it was a phenomenal ceremony, a lot of great, great energy. Um, afterwards, a lot of community members approached me and had nothing but positive things to say about some of the special things we're doing here at Topo Hocken. Culminating in a graduation ceremony. Thank you.
What an amazing year. Makes my anniversary of my first board meeting. So I'm super excited. Um, I just want to say that, um, I've loved every minute of this last year. One of our best events is Tractor Day, which I did see some of you add and how amazing. We combined Field Day and Tractor Day together this year on that half day. The students absolutely loved it. We had a barbecue truck that came from Denver, PA and, um, you know, the FFA did their milkshakes. Um, so it was all very well received. Um, and then inside, if you were not passing or if you had any discipline, you spent the time inside trying to finish up to catch up on any work. But because of those hours before the Keystone, during the Keystone exams, um, I was amazed at how many students brought up their grades. So it was absolutely very beneficial that we used that three hours to pass, to make sure kids were finishing their work and passing. So that was very exciting. Um, next year, we've already started discussing to make it bigger and better for next year. So the end of the year, um, was busy and we had a lot of great events for our kids and have parents in. Um, our spring concerts were awesome. We had the fifth and sixth grade concert with choral and band. We had the fourth grade choral and band concert that was paired with our art show. Um, and then also our music teacher Diana had a third grade recorder concert, um, for our third graders, which was great. We also had a talent show, um, that featured fourteen talents that were singing and dancing and tumbling. And so it was really fun to participate in that. Um, and then we ended the year with sixth grade graduation, which was an awesome event, so it began with the end.
Hi, everyone. Oh, I'm sorry. All right, I always have to make a scene. So, um, we have, the biggest thing with athletics that I'm super proud of when it comes to our high school coaches and their teams is, uh, our, our youth camps over the summer continue to grow in number. So we have, uh, our softball and boys' basketball youth camps are coming up in two weeks. Uh, they're both being held fi- the week of Father's Day. The, um, soccer camp is in three weeks and in early August, our girls' basketball team is also having a summer camp. Uh, some shout-outs, we have not one but two athletes that qualify for PIAA state tournaments this year in two sports, which is absolutely phenomenal. Um, both of them were members of our track team. Uh, Jack Heckman won districts this year in shot put, uh, which is, I believe, our first throwing champion in districts on the boys' side. He was also a state qualifier in wrestling. And Louis Stefenbach was a state qualifier with the three hundred meter hurdles. He was also a member of our golf team in the fall that made it, uh, one out of six teams that qualified for the PIAA state tournament. So very good way to end the year.
Speaking of the devil, hi, Karen. So today and yesterday, Megan Charles and I kicked off the summer with teaching safety care. So we've already started, um, getting our recertifications and our initial certifications, so our staff will be trained in that. Uh, the other thing I've been working on is preparing for ESY this July. Um, we were able to stack that with the majority all within house. The only person that we're bringing in was a student teacher that we had this past year who showed interest in coming back and teaching at our ESY this summer. Um, and one little exciting thing I had at the end of this year was my first year teaching at Topo Hocken as life skills teacher. Um, one of my students that was in kindergarten the year I started officially graduated from sixth grade this year. So that was really exciting for me to be able to kind of watch her and see the emotions in, uh, that she was experiencing with that change for her. Thank you.
Good evening. Uh, recently we met with representatives, uh, from the Ark of Pennsylvania. Um, the Ark of Pennsylvania is an advocacy group for individual intellectual and developmental disorders. Um, so what they do is they come in and partner with the school district to help us design and offer professional learning opportunities for staff. And what we're most excited about is they're a nice, um, bridge to those community engagement events that we've talked so much about. In fact, one of the representatives we met with is a parent of one of our students, um, who could not stop raving and raving about all the good things that her childhood been exposed to and just the great service and treatment they've had since enrolling in the district. Um, so we're really excited to work with them. Um, they're open to collaborating and editing what they already have prepared to fit our model, to fit what we want to, uh, break here in the district. So really excited about that. Um, great example of a way of, you know, finishing the year strong while planning ahead looking the next year. Um, also want to make sure I recognize Jen Baer. Jen Baer is one of our speech therapists. Uh, she was recognized as our staff member of the month, I believe, for March or April here. Um, she did win our elementary teacher of the year at our end, uh, end of year event. It was really great. If we sit here tonight and talk about the portrait of the Trojan, those habits, um, I can't think of a better person, a better staff that we have that exhibits those things.
I'm cleaning up. So our academic committee work, uh, final update for the year. The literacy and math teams completed all of the action items we had planned for this year with two exceptions. The literacy team intended to develop a long-term professional learning plan for literacy, but with our, excuse me, focus for next year on curriculum, we decided to adjust, do something a little less formal where we're working on, uh, increasing critical thinking and writing in a less formalized setting, more team by team, not during professional learning time over the course of the year, just to keep the ball moving while we're doing other things. Um, on the math side, we had to accelerate selection of new resource, um, the IM piece. So that kind of went out of our original order. We skipped over doing a K twelve skill progression, so we'll adjust our plan to reflect that piece. Um, I do want to thank the board for investing in the Cookstown reading interns. Um, having them onboard allows us to continue to service the same number of kids that we were servicing before, despite moving the instructional, um, support positions to math coaching positions. Um, so that was extremely valuable. We did have our two interns for the coming year visit us in mid-May. They got to spend the morning with, um, Dr. Nettic, Dr. Perk and myself just to hear about the district. And then they spent the afternoon in the buildings to meet the building principals, see the staff, have time with the reading specialists of the building, get to know the label in. And lastly, I just wanted to recognize the work that was done this year by the coaching team. Um, we look back to last year in terms of where we were to where we are now. It's, it was an incredible first year to have that team together. So I wanted to thank the board again for giving us the opportunity to bring that group of people together, the amazing work that they did this year.
Mr. Sherb?
Uh, yeah, just wanted to commend my staff. Uh, we started off the summer cleaning out the one hundred, five hundred and seven hundred hallways at the high school. Uh, so we brought all the staff together and yesterday they finished all but two rooms. So the high school staff finished that up today, so it was just great to see everyone and really get at it. So if you could, as Dr. Nettic said, we have a bunch of desks tables out and it's all done by maintenance and custodial staff. So it really worked out well. We had the three students that he hired, um, for custodial and one for maintenance, phenomenal, believe so far. So Mrs. Beck did well when she found us, heard those three labs, they worked their butts off yesterday. So, um, Paul along with Taylor, Kyle was nominated for, chosen as sports staff member of the year. Um, he chose not to go to the ceremony for reasons of anxiety, but he did put a video together, which we all thought was very well done and to show why, why he's such a valuable member to the team. He's, he's been great for us, so just wanted to commend him on that as well.
Thank you.
Nothing to share? Thanks for a great school year.
Are you sure?
You have to talk to them.
Anybody have any old business to discuss?
Right, I just talked about some of the budget numbers that, uh, like the homestead we kind of passed over. The, uh, tax, we got extra money from state, uh, for next year for the, uh, homestead farmstead. So, uh, the homestead farmstead, uh, reduction for taxes is going to be three hundred and twenty-six dollars in next year, which is more, which is more than last year. And I have a comparison here from back in fourteen, from ten years ago. It was two hundred dollars and now it's three twenty-six. So it's hundred and twenty-six dollars less than we were paying in fourteen, fifteen. And I did some other analysis, like, like, uh, your taxes, if you had a hundred thousand dollar home, um, your taxes will be a hundred ninety-five dollars less now than they were ten years ago. And if you had a homestead, it would be three, three hundred and twenty-one dollars less than they were ten years ago. And if you had a homestead, an ader homestead, it would be four hundred and forty-eight dollars less than they were ten years ago. So I do, I do have the average tax bill information. Uh, the average residential is right around a hundred to a hundred and one thousand, seven forty-one, so that's one ninety-eight. Yeah, on average decrease. Farms, uh, decreased, uh, by an average of two hundred and fifty-seven dollars in the last ten years. Commercial and industrial, this is all of them, combined warehouses and everybody else. The average decrease would be twenty-five hundred dollars from ten years ago. But that's, uh, if you're, if you're just talking about warehouses, their, their decrease is forty-three thousand dollars from ten years ago. But they're, uh, but they're the reason why it's, it's happening, so. Other commercial and industrial without warehouses would be six hundred and twenty-nine dollars decrease over ten years ago. So it is twelve years in a year in a row, we had a decrease in, uh, so we did have a tax increase and it's the eighth year we've increased.
That's, that's their perfect reason you don't give lures.
Right.
Because their taxes also decreased, but you decrease taxes for everybody, not just the work. When they came, you know, they wanted the tax decrease just for them over ten or twenty years. But by giving the tax decrease to everybody, they also benefited. They, even though they didn't, we didn't give them a tax break to them. So that's, that's the fine argument against never giving a tax break to anybody for building a warehouse. And I don't, when I leave this board, I don't remember what we're hearing that we gave them again. Same with peace.
I hear you. When you guys were against the lures, I was panicking, like, come on, you gotta, you gotta do this and, and, and you guys were right, so. The only other comparison I have is how we compare to Berks County. At some point, this is back when I started here in, uh, two thousand and ten, we were at twenty-seven point oh eight. And county average, county average was twenty-six point two one, so we were above the county average. Right now, we are at twenty-five point seven five, but the county average is thirty-two point four four. So it is a huge difference right now between us and the county. So we were, you know, way above the county one point, uh, thirteen, fourteen years ago, so.
That's like a weighted average though, isn't it? Don't that hurt us a little bit in some?
Well, good, good, um, the subsidy, the subsidy that's coming out for next year, basic ed, because our equalized mileage, but they're saying our local tax, tax cap is at as high as it should be. So they're not going to give us as much of an increase in subsidy for the next couple of years. Like, we're getting a hundred twenty-nine thousand on our next year. Some districts are getting a lot more than they were.
You're ready to get to schools? Yes. It's not incomparable. It's not, it's not equitable at all. That's because all the state knows how they spend money.
Well, for me, responsible, you're penalized, right?
Yeah, when you have it, they want to spend it and you can't, that's not how it should be.
Thank you. Jill's not here today, she's in New York representing district, uh, farm school program, which she was chosen for.
Any new business?
Yeah, I got two things. Tom checked the oil prices again, Nurse Bear, quite a bit lower than they had been. And also I would like to thank, and I said it to, I talked to the teachers the other day and the all staff the other day. And I would like to thank you administrators for a good school year. Um, I think we're probably, I told, what I said the other day was I've been on the board twenty-three years. We're probably headed in the right direction, probably the best we've ever been currently with the current staff we have and the current teachers we have. And I think we're moving in the right direction. And Chris and I talked about it the other day, no matter how good we are, we can only do better. And I think there's a lot of room for improving it, but we're definitely better than we have been in my twenty-three years, I think. Let's keep up the good work and keep pushing forward and make, make it Topo Hocken better. Thank, thank you all for your time and your effort and thank everybody out there for showing up and pushing us to do better. Thank you.
Could use this building when I have a few more years to cast Austria's record.
There you go.
He's going to shatter that, right?
No, I'm not. It ain't gonna happen.
I did share that I got a chance to tour the building again last week. One thing that I wanted to point out as I did tour that building, every construction worker there says hello to Matt. Everyone. They all know him, they're all telling him stuff, joking with him, he'll be fun at him, he'll be fun at the phone case.
I'd size.
That tells me, that tells me that, and I don't, I don't know how he does what he does in a day's time, but that he is very visible and very involved. And that is a huge asset to us as this project goes to have that involvement and that, um, ownership represented daily. Um, so I, I say thank you for that. Um, I, like I said, I try and make it a point to do that at least once every three, four weeks to walk through. Uh, but like every time I see it, like, it's like you've worked with these people for years, you know? So it's impressive just.
It's, it's a good group of guys to it, I see.
It's how we know our technology doesn't work.
And she made the.
But you do get that done.
Also makes them accountable, that's good. They know he's walking through.
Correct, yeah, yes. And if you have that, if they know, oh shit, that Kyle's crooked, he's going to make me change it. I will change it now, yep, you know, type thing.
Right, right. And also kudos to Matt and his whole team and everybody for the night graduation. Uh, everything just went like so smoothly and when it was over, we were out in field, you know, celebrating a girlfriend, a daughter graduating and just walking around, talking to everybody and catching the fever of it. And I passed Matt and, and I circled back around and I said to him, are you okay? Cause he looked almost gray.
It must have been the lighting, cause I felt good.
I think it must have, but he said, well, I haven't here since four thirty AM. So I'm like, okay, I just was like a little concerned and I was like, okay, you're just tired. But the night was just amazing.
Yes, eh, yeah. And I was headed to Eric X, um, Taco Bill, our team. I had some tough conversations with this board and with our leadership in the past month. But our team is as strong or stronger than it has ever, ever been. I've been in this district since kindergarten. This is the first time ever that we have the same faces in leadership for two school years. Now, think about that, that's thirty years, the first time that we have the same consecutive leadership for two solid years. And we're getting stuff accomplished. Finally, we're moving forward. We're not taking three steps forward and someone leaves and, you know, we pick up the pieces and then. the pieces and then the next person has a different vision. So, we're steering and we're zigzagging. We're finally on a road and it feels really good. Graduation, you know, one of my favorite nights of the year. Get my reward for all the effort and slack that take to be able to give diplomas out and the biggest paycheck ever, being able to do my daughter her diploma, so.
The selfie was awesome. The selfie was awesome.
It did. It was a great time. So, but thank you for allowing me to do that on behalf of the district. But, yeah, I'm really excited. I've been super excited for the next school year because I think we're finally moving forward. That's all I have. If anyone else has anything to offer. Calendar events is listed there. It's very bleak. Actually, there's nothing on. So, other than board meetings. Great to know requests are listed there. Somebody was definitely interested in what's going on in Toppie here.
That's the point, by the way.
That's just here.
It does make sense.
That was me?
Yes. Are there any citizens or students who should address the board to see?
I just want to thank everyone. I have two grandsons. We've been through elementary school, so I knew what to expect. But I am the only one in my family that admits I was extremely nervous about middle school. And it proved to be one of the most rewarding, great years I would have ever expected. Mr. Hammer, you were there every morning. I'm a drop wall, I'm a car puller, every morning, sun, wind, snow, watching the shore. There's a smooth transition. I don't know why, there's never not a smooth transition. Thank you, you're always there. Mr. Lynch, I'm sorry he's not here today because I'm just completely almost speechless about Mr. Lynch. I thought maybe it was me. I grew up having that ultimate respect. I never wanted to talk to a principal nor did I want them to talk to me. And I remember my grandson, we were at an event at the end of the year and he is just talking to Mr. Lynch. I'm like, ask him, I said, Graham, do you have conversations with Mr. Lynch? He looked at me like, yeah. I'm like, just casual? About school? Boo. He looked at me like I was from another planet. So, after our math class reunion, we meet about twenty or thirty of us monthly because we're getting old and we meet and just have lunch together. And I said, hey, guys, were we afraid of our principals? Were we scared or is it just me? And everybody's like scared to death. Nobody wanted a principal to talk to them. So, I don't know. If that is the climate you've wanted, you've achieved it. I, I'm just speechless. And Mr. Nets, Dr. Netsnik, I never even knew my superintendent except that he gave the speech at graduation. I hear you grill a mean hamburger. You're grilling hamburgers? I just have my mouth open half the times when I'm hearing these things. Mr. Hammerick, are you responsible for that senior walkthrough for the elementary school? Do you make them do that or do they want to do that? Oh, because I'm telling you, and I want to thank the teachers for allowing it, because I saw it and I'm watching it on the dojo thing. And I said to my little grandson in third grade, I'm like, gee, did you see there's two boys that help in the coaches baseball team? I said, did you see so and so? He said, gee, they gave me high fives. It just melted my heart that these kids take the time and do that to these young students. And I want to thank you, the board, for hiring the people that you hire. I don't know where you found Mr. Lynch. I'm just concentrating on Mr. Lynch because he just, he's unbelievably friendly. I don't know where you found him, but thank you. He's just made a huge difference in my grandson's life. Thank you for all the programs you approve and all the ones you disapprove, that you use your judgment to say what's best for Tupper Hocken. I truly appreciate it. That's my joy. I, I go back and forth from brief reading, elated. And here's my concern, to see the U S News and World Report, school thing. I'm from Montgomery County. I went to Springfield, my daughter went to Springfield. I think we're just one county over, so I didn't think there's much difference. But, oh my goodness, we are so bad in science. I look up Common Core and I see it as so that all students everywhere learn the same thing. So, why is there so much difference in our scores? We had a score of thirty-two percent proficiency in science. And that just made me just, ugh. And then I looked at other Burks County schools, so we're not, we're not bad except for Wilson and Coopstown. I'm not sure what they're doing that they scored so high in everything. But the rest of Burks County is just, your science teachers must be crying. So, when I look at Common Core, they stress math and in language arts. Nowhere do I see science. Did we forget science? Because honestly, and I don't mean to be rude, but honestly, in our, in your slogan, I do expect you can embrace science. I believe that the kids in Burks County are as smart as the kids in Montgomery County. And I would love to see you achieve better grades in science. If there's anything I could do, like, I, I don't know, I'm not brilliant, but I did love science. Like, could we do like a little mentoring program? Like, do, what do your science teachers think? Because I know my grandson loves science and.
Don't believe everything you read on the.
How did we get thirty-two percent proficiency in science?
I would argue, and I, I'm just, not arguing, but I would like to make a point. I feel here, we are heavy on the science.
That's right, boy. I thought agriculture is science.
We might not be heavy on the science that is in the standardized test, if that makes sense. And I'm, I'm shooting from the hip here, I have no factual data, but I, I just know everything we're doing is sometimes science, which also evolves into math, you know, math and science are very, very close. I, I just feel like we're, we're a lot of times heavy on the science.
The three, the three top kids that graduated that spoke at graduation were all heavy, they were all strongest in science and math. So, to me, that was kind of a good thing to see, that the science and math was grinning out so well among our three kids that spoke at graduation. I think with what we're trying to do with science and the new science standards coming out, we're really pushing the hands on. We're doing the right thing for our kids, but we're pushing more hands on and STEM type stuff. And like Kyle said, maybe that doesn't equate to the Keystone, because I don't necessarily agree. I've heard some of the Keystone questions and some of them are just asinine, to be point blank. There's a lot of asinine questions in the Keystone that I've seen, because they just don't make sense when they're trying to catch it. So, I don't put a lot of faith in testing. I put a lot of faith in what our kids will see that when they graduate. And I think we have a lot of kids that succeed in science and math. When my daughter went here, she graduated in twelve, she got accepted to Penn State main campus. Only ten percent of freshmen get accepted in the main campus. She took math and I was always worried about her math wasn't strong enough. She was up there and they asked her, they came to her and asked her to took, to tutor kids, freshmen in math, the top ten percent across the state, because she knew her math stuff from Tupper Hocken. And that told me something right there that we are doing, even though we don't seem to test well, because like I say, a lot of test questions are asinine. But we are doing something right because we've got kids that go on to be very successful and can help other kids. So, don't always read in the test board what it says, because it's not always accurate. I, I don't have a lot of faith in testing. I have a lot of faith in what we do to make kids successful in life.
Well, I do love the programs. That's what I thought. I hate to end on a sad note, but when I read that, I went, ooh, that makes me so sad.
I don't think it's a sad note. I think it's a valid talking point. I, I truly do, because, and I, I think, you know, some of our, our vision here with, you know, as you said, the hires, where we found these people. You have no idea the nights that were spent sitting around this table interviewing people. Like, I can do not, we, we talked just last board meeting, that there was a month, two years ago, we had meetings multiple nights a week for interviews and then board meetings and then it was just, you know, yeah, it was every, it was like twice.
January, April, every week.
Every week, we had something, whether we put people in the hot seat or it's a discussion we, you know, board meeting.
And not only that, the number of candidates we weed through, because you get sixty applicants for a track and probably two or three of them are qualified.
And part of that, part of that, them, them tireless nights that I don't really wish to ever refer again. But we, as you said, we hired some amazing staff.
Oh.
And that is, you know, that Dr. Perk and Dr. Matlack, that is some of the things that they're focused on, literally right now, the new science standards and stuff. You know, maybe, maybe them scores aren't the best, but you know, them scores technically, they're basically two years old, correct?
And I don't, I, that's where I don't, I'm not sure where they pulled that data from, so I could pull.
U S News and World Report.
Yeah, I don't, I'm not sure where they pull that from.
Oh, yeah, I don't know.
Just to give you an idea of our standardized scores from last year. Bethel's fourth grade, so at the elementary, they, they test science in fourth grade. At the secondary, they tested eight and then the Keystone exam, the biology. Bethel was seventy-seven point five percent proficient with thirty-seven point five advanced. Penn Berman was seventy-one percent proficient or advanced with thirty-one of that being advanced. And the junior, senior high school, that's eighth grade, and the high school with Keystone is sixty-two point two with twenty-five percent of those being advanced. So.
Well, overall, I'm just thrilled. I'm thrilled how you recognize the students who do achievements. It, it just warms my heart, the different programs that you have and the different things that you do and how you care for your students. It's just, it's, it's just amazing. So, thank you, thank you very much.
One other thing I'd like to say about the science, there are some schools that will teach specifically towards the, the testing. And we kind of don't agree with that philosophy. We, that they teach so they do well in the testing, but they're not really learning anything.
They're, they're, they're being taught how to take a test.
And we don't teach that well. So, and I, and that's a fact, there are some schools that that's, they want their Keystone exams to, and they teach for that test. And I, since I've been on the board, I've been pushing that we do not teach for a test to get people successful.
And to capitalize on that a little bit, we had some conversation with the high school team. One of the things we don't have at the high school right now is college in the classroom science levels or A P science classes. And the U S World Report, there's forty percent of that hundred percentage that is strictly A P and college courses. So, because we don't offer those right now, we, we're essentially forfeiting forty percent just because we have no A P or college in the classroom. But we did look, we met with RAC and opportunities to get college in the classroom at the high school to help with science. And we're hoping that a hundred percent, that's an area where we can grow.
Well, that's great. And I wanted to say, I twist my grandson, I'm like, who, who do you like the best? Who is your best teacher? Oh, Gene, don't ask me to think, I love them all. Who loves all their teachers? I don't know, I just don't know. So, thank you again. Thank you again for all you put in to hire such great people. Thank you.
Anyone else this evening?
Hi, I'm Chris Kramer. We moved into the district in Toppie twenty-two years ago. My daughter Gabby graduated this year. We've had eight kids who've gone through this school district. Not totally through, but at one point or another, they've gone through. And I just want to say, the staff, the teachers, the faculty, administrative, the board, all of you have done an amazing job. I'm so glad that we've been in this district. I even helped in the elementary school level, P T O, things like that. It's been amazing to be a part of this district. Thank you, you did an amazing job and keep up the great work.
Anyone else? Mr. Sadison, you're quiet. Quiet. Okay. Will we have an executive session for personnel, promotion adjourned?
Ten seconds.
All in favor?
Yes.
Mr. Perry's meeting adjourned.